Good evening, we're calling.
Reporting in progress.
Good evening, we're calling the Groton Town Council meeting. January 7, 2025, to order. First up is roll call, and I did receive notice from Councilor Gajewski and Pacino that they are running late.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bordelon?
Here.
Gajewski? Sorry, you just told me he's running late. Jones?
Here.
McBride?
Here.
Merritt?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
She is running late. Ross?
Here.
And Mayor Franco?
I am here, thank you. All right, up next is salute to the flag.
My fellow agents, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up next is recognition, awards and memorials. Councilor Parker, would you like to take the proclamation for celebrating President Jimmy Carter?
I will. Thank you. Madam Mayor, proclamation celebrating President Jimmy Carter. Whereas James Earl Carter Jr. was born on October 1, 1924, to Lindley and Carter and James Earl Carter Sr. in Plains, Georgia; and whereas after attending public school, the Georgia Southwestern College and the Georgia Institute of Technology, President Carter enlisted in the United States Naval Academy in 1943 and graduated with a Bachelor of Science in 1946; and whereas President Carter married his hometown sweetheart, Rosalyn -- I thought Rosalyn, it was Rosalyn, is it? Is Rosalyn? Rosalyn Smith Carter on July 7, 1946, in Plains, Georgia, beginning a marriage that would last over seventy-seven years until Rosalyn's passing in 2023. The Carters expanded their family and had three sons, James, Jack, and Donald, and one daughter, Amy. And whereas President Carter later applied for and was accepted to submarine school in Groton as a naval submarine base to become a submariner, and was stationed in Groton in 1948, where he served as an officer on the USS Palm Fredd and the USS Barracuda until leaving the Navy upon his father's passing in 1953. And whereas, after his father's passing, President Carter returned to his hometown to raise his family and run the family's peanut farm, all while being an active leader and community member. And whereas, in 1962, President Carter began his political career, later becoming elected the governor of Georgia in 1970 by focusing on ecology, efficiency in government, and the removal of racial barriers. And whereas, later in 1974, President Carter announced his candidacy to run for president, and in 1977, was named the thirty-ninth president of the United States, that had a vision for moral integrity, peace, and justice. Whereas during his presidency, he championed the cause of human rights, working tirelessly to promote peace in the Middle East, exemplified by the Camp David Accords, and placed significant focus on energy conservation and environmental protection, which helped to lay a foundation for a suitable future through his efforts to address energy crises and invest in alternative energy sources. And whereas, after his presidency, President Carter continued his lifelong commitment in humanitarian work, founding the Carter Center, and leading efforts in global health, peace building, and election monitoring across the world. And whereas the Carters even partnered with Habitat for Humanity in 1984, creating the Carter Work Project. The Carters spent countless hours providing leadership, assisting with fundraising efforts, and even provided hands-on volunteering services alongside homers and others advocating for affordable housing. And whereas, for his decades of untiring efforts to find peaceful solutions to international conflicts, to advance democracy and human rights, and to grow economic and social development, President Jimmy Carter was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in 2002. And whereas, in 2005, when the Navy was set to close the Groton Submarine Base, it was President Carter who wrote a letter sharing it was cost-effective and logical to expand the submarine base and keep the submarine fleet in Groton. And whereas, the town of Groton will be forever thankful for that recommendation. In addition to President Carter's policies contribute to preserving coastal areas and promoting renewable energy as the town focuses on resilience and sustainability. And whereas, his focus on the promotion of science and technology has impacted several naval research and innovation in Groton, home to the Electric Boat Division of General Dynamics. And whereas, President Carter's courage, empathy, and vision for a more just and peaceful world have inspired countless individuals to act in the service of others. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Groton Town Council, on behalf of the town of Groton, honors and recognizes the enduring legacy of President Jimmy Carter following his passing on December 29, 2024, and are eternal grateful for the contributions he made to the town of Groton and our country. Dated at Groton, Connecticut, the seventh day of January 2025, signed by Mayor Rachel Franco.
Thank you. Let's have a moment of silence for President Carter. And just to note, the proclamation will be sent to the Carter Library from the town of Groton. All right, up next, we don't have any public hearings. Recede of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or, as directed by the mayor, and if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. All presentations should be made from the lectern and should include the speaker's name and address for the record. Up first is Jeffrey Richards.
Hello, and I guess welcome to the mayor and your councilors, and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Dr. Jeff Richards, and I live at 220 Cliff Street in Mystic, in a 1885 green Victorian house with a tower. I've been in the city a long time, but I want to talk about another Jeff for a minute, Jeff Pritchard, who's sitting right back there. I have observed him and his work on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a very long time, and have found him to be probably the best person in town to be on that committee, probably knows more than the town professionals involved in planning and zoning, and has gotten the town by his leadership out of a lot of different fixes over the last few years. So on his behalf, I would like to recommend that you, as councilors, continue his work on the Planning and Zoning Commission, because he's the best person in the town for the job. So thank you for listening to my comment.
Thank you. Up next, Jeff Pritchard.
Hi, Jeff Pritchard, 31 West Mystic Avenue, Mystic. After a meeting last month, I went and did some research on the background for my lack of a reappointment. I looked at the proceed, Town Council procedure for that. Section 6.4 is very explicit, and it says that the Town Committee or the Town Council Committee for Appointments must act on reappointments. There was no action taken. Based on that, I did resubmit it so that it can be reconsidered. It was taken off the agenda for that committee, even though they didn't take any action. And by doing that, the Town Council does not get the opportunity to change the position or accept the position made by the Town Council Committee, which I think is not proper. And especially the fact that there was no discussion on any of the items on the agenda that night. It was just somebody would make a motion, and it would be voted on, and that was it. And I don't understand how you run a meeting without any discussion. It's not proper. And I would recommend that the councilors go to this meeting that the town manager set up at the end of the month for Robert's rules and freedom of information, since they appear that they need to understand the conduct of meetings. That's all. And I would hope they would reconsider the lack of support for my reappointment.
Thank you. Up next is Howard Vize.
Yes, my name is Howard Vize, and I reside at 10 Prospect Street in Mystic, where I've lived for the last eight years. Mayor Franco, members of the Town Council, like others here this evening, I have deep concerns about the failure to reappoint Jeffrey Pritchard to the Planning and Zoning Commission, despite his years of exemplary service as a member and chair of that commission. I also have concerns that extend beyond the fate of that individual, to the manner in which his ouster was carried out, and to what that process portends for the town of Groton. Officially, the commission and the town of Groton were deprived of Mr. Pritchard's experience and abilities during the November 19 proceeding of the Personnel and Appointments Committee and the December 3 proceeding of the Town Council, yet no semblance of a decision-making process can be found in the record of either meeting. The decision to make a personnel change of this significance could not, or at least should not, have been made without serious discussion of the reasons. But any such discussion seems to have taken place offstage, where it cannot be seen and where it remains hidden. Giving a few nods to the form of an above-board personnel decision while conducting the actual business behind closed doors might be tolerable with respect to positions that involve the mechanical application of ironclad rules, but has no place with respect to committees that are repeatedly called upon, as in this case, to resolve hot-button issues of sweeping significance through the exercise of sound judgment. Replacing the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission in the manner done here smacks of a hidden agenda and an unsavory way to bring about profound change in public policy without public involvement or scrutiny. Residents of this town are therefore left to draw their own conclusion about what motivated this action, proceeding not from a conspiratorial framework but from, hopefully, logical inference. All that the council has left us to rely upon points to unhappiness of some council members with the independence that Mr. Pritchard and his commission demonstrated when independence was most called for. I'm thrilled to be a member of this community and appreciate the many things that this council has done right, but I have seemingly been led astray more than once by unbridled enthusiasm for ill-conceived development proposals, most notably the proposed 930-unit oral school development and the data center proposal that the people of this community and the Planning and Zoning Commission saw in a different light. In each instance, the Planning and Zoning Commission, led by Chairman Pritchard, has been an invaluable line of defense. While others continue to be enamored by developers' sales pitches or wilted in the face of litigation threats and other pressures, the Planning and Zoning Commission held its ground, precluding development of the oral school property on a scale that violated existing zoning regulations and imposing reasonable size and use limits on data centers. Its steadfastness may have been frustrating to some members of this council, but it was greatly appreciated by members of this community. Absent any other apparent causes for his removal, some may infer that Mr. Pritchard was jettisoned not for doing his job poorly, but for doing it too well. We now confront looming issues that require the same judicious approach and independence that Chairman Pritchard and the commission brought to bear on these prior matters, among them, the future of the Butler School property and the unchecked proliferation of short-term rental properties that tear at the fabric of residential neighborhoods by replacing neighbors with transients and residences with what are essentially house-shaped businesses. Both the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission have important roles to play in facing these issues, but their roles are not identical, and the commission cannot perform its role without maintaining its independence. That independence cannot be maintained if the perceived consequence of exercising independence is removal without stated cause, explanation, or opportunity to be heard. That's the lesson that I fear is to be drawn from what has taken place to date, and for the sake of the community, it's a lesson that cannot be allowed to stand. We need a better approach. I thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I appreciate that very much. And if it's of any, if it's in keeping with the order or benefit, I have a written statement to submit. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Sutherland.
Mayor Franco and town councilors, my name is Sue Sutherland, and I live at 32 Neptune Drive in Groton. You should have received a citizen's petition from Alyssa Wright regarding the reappointment of Jeffrey Pritchard to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Alyssa is not feeling well tonight, so I'm reading it into the public record for her. My name is Alyssa Wright, and I live at 59 Main Street in Noink. I write as a lifelong resident concerned with the general welfare of our community for many years to express my unequivocal support for the reappointment of Jeffrey Pritchard to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and my deep dismay at the highly irregular manner in which his reappointment application has been cavalierly treated by this body. Mr. Pritchard's record of service to our community in the realm of land use regulation is unparalleled. He served with distinction on the Planning Commission for twenty years, and subsequently as a member and chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the past five years after the zoning function was absorbed by the Planning Commission. As a dedicated member of these bodies, he has developed a wealth of knowledge and expertise in the extensive rules and regulations of both planning and zoning, and works skillfully to ensure that the underlying principles are implemented uniformly, consistently, fairly, and objectively. He is respectful of the public and applicants receptive to new ideas and fresh approaches in resolving complicated land use issues, and admired by other commissioners for his ability to build consensus. The powers and duties of municipal planning and zoning commissions are conferred on those bodies exclusively and directly by the general statutes. One of the most important planning functions delegated to a commission involves preparing and revising a town's plan of conservation and development, a process that our commission is in the midst of now. Mr. Pritchard's considerable experience in preparing the last P O C D and his continued participation and uninterrupted leadership in the preparation of the new P O C D, already in progress, would, I am sure, result in improved outcomes and long-term benefits to the community. The process that has unfolded to date with regard to Mr. Pritchard's application is concerning. Mr. Pritchard has applied for appointment or reappointment to the Planning Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission a combined toll of seven times in the past twenty-five years. And until now, his applications have routinely sailed through without objection or controversy. Only gratitude for his continued willingness to serve the community in this way. By contrast, a lack of transparency, due diligence, and accountability, and a highly problematic substitution for regular order in the town's treatment of Mr. Pritchard's reappointment application are a grave affront to the public's trust in the legitimacy and the moral right of this town government to use the powers granted to it under the town charter and state statutes. In conclusion, Jeffrey Pritchard has served our community commendably for nearly five decades, including for twenty-five years on our land use regulatory bodies, and previously as an eight-term member of the representative town meeting. And in my judgment, he should not be abandoned arbitrarily and capriciously, and in the absence of convincing factual evidence, aired in a fair, transparent, and open process with an opportunity for Mr. Pritchard to be heard. I respectfully urge you to take up Mr. Pritchard's application in the regular order and reappoint him to another term as a distinguished member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, Alyssa Wright. And she has already sent this to the town councilors. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Pendrey.
Good evening, Mayor Franco, councilors, town councilors. My name is Elizabeth Pendrey. I reside at 83 High Street. This is to say that I'm deeply concerned about the recent dismissal of Jeffrey Pritchard as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission without a proper vote or opportunity for him to be heard. This lack of transparency raises serious questions about the integrity of the process and the motivations behind this decision. Mr. Pritchard's leadership in planning and zoning has demonstrated a clear commitment to Groton's long-term well-being. Under his guidance, as you know, the commission established reasonable regulations to prevent harmful hyper data centers, rejected an overly dense development of the oral school property in already congested Mystic. They implemented measures to curb overgrowth of short-term rentals that so threatens our community. These thoughtful decisions reflect a focus on community health, safety, and sustainability. Removing Mr. Pritchard without due process undermines public trust and threatens to erode confidence in the council's commitment to fairness. To restore transparency and accountability, I urge the council to hold a full vote on all commission appointments. Require all candidates to be interviewed by the Personnel and Appointments Committee before any vote. I strongly encourage you to reinstate Mr. Pritchard as chairman of Planning and Zoning. His expertise and leadership are invaluable to Groton's future. Transparency is not just an ethical imperative, it is the foundation of effective governance and essential to maintaining the public trust. Thank you.
Next, Patrice Granatowsky.
Good evening, councilors. Patrice Granatowsky, 30 North Prospect Street, Groton, Connecticut. Something completely different, kind of completely different. I'm here to talk about the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, and this is something that is near and dear to my heart and to many people in the community. And it was during one of my terms as mayor that the task force was created. And I have come to hear that the task force wasn't dissolved, I guess, was not renewed, was not allowed to continue forth. I'm not sure of the exact terminology that was provided, but there's kind of a theme going here, because we had a series of volunteers, and I feel that proper gratitude has not been expressed to them. So that's what I'm going to do tonight. And I'm going to start with the former chair, Zell Stever. And I cannot possibly do justice to the qualification of these people that served. So very briefly, I'm going to touch upon what I think are some highlights for the people that might not know these people. So Zell was the chair. He worked in Washington for the EPA. He also worked for the Army Corps of Engineers, in addition to doing work in the state of Connecticut. And something I didn't know, he negotiated five chapters of an agreement of one of the first environmental UN earth summits. That's pretty impressive. Sarah Kelly is a PhD from Yale, and she worked at Pfizer and at one point was head of Groton Research and Development. Miki Weiss, PhD in zoology, MA from Harvard, founder and director of Project O for years, decades. Maggie Jones, 27 years as director of Denison Pequetzipos. Maggie Jones, 27 years as director of Dennison Pequod Cipos Nature Center. Victor Velaugra, medical doctor, professor of medicine at UConn. Frank Boland, PhD from MIT, professor at UConn. Jessie Stratton, 14 years as a state rep during which time she chaired the Joint Committee on the Environment, and she was also the policy director at DEEP. That's just to give you a sense of the qualifications of these people. And they willingly and graciously served the community for years. And I would like to publicly thank them because as far as I know, it hasn't been done. So thank you to all the members of the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, on behalf of myself, on behalf of the members of the council that originally formed that task force. As an aside, I just wanted to say to Mr. Pritchard, I met Mr. Pritchard years ago on the RTM and we served together. And my relationship with Mr. Pritchard is similar to my relationship with the late Mr. Obern, Captain Obern. We were on different sides of the aisle on many issues, but I always felt comfortable that he was serving from a place where he was working for the good of Groton. And we did not always agree on issues. We were oftentimes in opposition on issues. But thank you for your service and it's entirely up, it's the council's purview to do what they will with appointments. But thank you for your time and thank you to the members of the task force. Good night.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment?
Janet Hamilton, 28 Hancock Drive, Mr. Connecticut. My backyard was the Oral School project, which Mr. Pritchard and the zoning committee stopped, for which I am very grateful. I respectfully request that you put him back on the committee. And more importantly, I'd like to ask John Burt a question. I know you are an ICM member and certified as such, and I know that you are in charge of the day-to-day operations of the government here. In that certification has a code of ethics. My question is, was this done ethically? And can you still have the certification? Or will you lose the certification, which is required for the job, to make sure these people do the right thing? Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up?
Greetings. My name is Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive. And for the record, full disclosure, I'm an elected Board of Education member as well as the spouse of councillor Bordelone. However, I'm speaking tonight primarily as a concerned resident and a registered voter in this town. Once again, I come before this council to express what I consider to be yet another grave concern regarding this council's flagrant disregard for due process, due diligence, common decency, and consistency in expectations for decorum. Last month, a majority of this council voted to validate and ratify what I consider to be improper, disjointed, and contradictory applications and interpretations of its own rules, policies, and procedures. In failing to reappoint Jeff Pritchard to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the mayor and the majority of this council cited Town Council Rule 7.0C, which states, "Only items reported from a committee with approval recommended by a majority of committee members present shall appear on the agenda. Action on any unscheduled items shall require suspension of the rules and shall comply with FOIA." Upon further review, this rule should never have been proposed nor approved by the Rules and Procedure Committee nor the majority of this council. Not only does it grant inordinate power to any given committee, which usually consists of only three councillors, two of which makes a majority of that committee, over the full council of nine duly-elected representatives of the community. It is also in direct conflict with the Town Council Appointment Policy for Boards and Commissions, Section 4.7.1. To reiterate, this Rule 7.0C as written grants two or three councillors the power to withhold options, applicants, and/or relevant information from the whole body of nine. The very concept of this rule, and especially in practice, how it's being applied by the mayor and a majority of this council is antithetical to the tenets of representative democracy. This rule needs to be revised in such a way that when a committee's business is before the whole council, any of the nine duly and equally elected councillors are allowed to bring forward any item via motion and a second that was submitted to any of the committees, regardless of whether the majority of that committee voted it forward as a recommendation or not. Another reason to revise this rule is that it also is in direct conflict with the Appointment Policy, Section 4.7.1, which states, "It is the policy of the Town Council to appoint the most qualified citizens to the ABCs. The Personnel and Appointments Committee shall consider all applicants that have been recommended by the political town committees for a vacant position regardless of party affiliation or lack thereof, but in compliance with CGS 9167 regarding minority representation. The Personnel and Appointments Committee makes recommendations to the Town Council regarding individuals to be appointed to the ABCs. The Town Council reserves the right to appoint any applicant regardless of a recommendation from either political town committee or the Personnel and Appointments Committee." Focus on that last sentence. "The Town Council reserves the right to appoint any applicant regardless of a recommendation from either political town committees or the Personnel and Appointments Committee." So that rule is in direct conflict with your own policy. That should call into question the credibility of these rules that are run through so fast. I'll submit the rest of this in writing to be part of the minutes. But in plain English, that sentence means that the whole Town Council, via its regular parliamentary procedure and rules of order, should have the authority to override any recommendations from any of its subcommittees. Now, adding to the confusion is the haste with which the town clerk's office issued a letter to Mr. Pritchard informing him of the committee's decision to not reappoint, which was sent after the November 19th Personnel and Appointments Committee but prior to the December 3rd regular Town Council meeting. In theory, this letter was sent because of Rule 7.0C. However, deliberations in the 12-3 meeting revealed that the majority of the council and one councillor in particular, who was a member of the Personnel and Appointments Committee, is not clear on the exact nature of the action or non-action that occurred on 11/19. At one point, councillor Gieske stated that since the PNA Committee did not discuss or vote on Mr. Pritchard's reappointment due to his nomination not receiving a second in committee, that there was no action taken and therefore could still be considered at a future PNA committee. This interpretation only compounds the confusion of this council because if this is accurate, then the chair, Bruce Jones, of the PNA Committee, and Mayor Rachel Franco both failed in their duties to faithfully execute the Town Council Policy, Section 6.4, which Mr. Pritchard mentioned earlier, about "shall take action."
Thank you.
The rest of this I'll submit in writing.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Good evening. So lovely to come out on such a beautiful night. My name is Mary Ellen Furlong. I live at 57 Fishtown Lane, Noank, Mystic, Groton. I'm kind of astounded that you've managed to communicate with one another without using any words or emails or anything at all that might explain why three people would suddenly decide to do the same thing. I don't see any ethical way that you can be communicating with one another. I don't see any ethics here, and I certainly don't see any transparency. Either you did discuss this, or somebody told everybody what to do and this is just a puppet show. I have no idea which way it is, but this is not transparency at all. And really, you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak?
I am Penny Miller. I live at 56 Hancock Drive in Groton. I am appalled by the ouster of Jeff Pritchard from the Planning and Zoning Committee, and I strenuously object to the way in which it was done. It seems like the failure of either councillor Jones or councillor Gieske to second a motion made by councillor Rusk in a meeting of the Personnel and Appointments Committee was enough to dispense with Mr. Pritchard's application and cause a letter to be sent informing Mr. Pritchard that his application was denied. Thus, Mr. Pritchard's application was nixed without being considered or voted on by the Town Council at large. What kind of due process is this? Jeff Pritchard is an expert on zoning and land use regulations and has made invaluable contributions on Groton Planning and Zoning Commissions for decades, devoting his time voluntarily and sacrificially. It is unconscionable that his application for reappointment has been met with indifference and rejection in the form of a perfunctory letter from the town clerk. Moreover, Mr. Pritchard's removal from Planning and Zoning is a major disservice to the people of Groton. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come up and speak?
Good evening. Scott Westerbelt, 7 Boulder Court, Mystic, Connecticut. Just want to kind of continue where I was last month when we were having this same type of discussion. A couple of other things that happened later in that meeting I'd just like to point out. Around the 2:10 mark, the mayor said that she didn't think there was any kind of plan, that she didn't recognize any kind of plan moving forward. However, the plan seems to be in place because the Town Council and, or there were no members of the Town Council during the last seated Town Council, tried to remove and block three persons from the Planning and Zoning Commission. That was Sue Sutherland, Bruce McDermott trying to get on it, and Michael Kane. And now you seem to have potentially found a way to move, remove any other roadblocks. You didn't have the votes to do it last time, and so those people were still there, with the exception of Mr. McDermott. But you seem to think you've found a formula now. Didn't work the first time when you were trying to, when you were moving against John Goodrich. Only this time, it looks like what you're, if you get away with what you're doing to Mr. Pritchard, then you're going to be able to do that as these others come back up for reappointment, and you'll be able to mold this the way you want, which is also something that we heard during the last Town Council. It's pretty disturbing that you've taken this stance. And then a little bit later, a minute or two later after that comment, there was the comment that you're not a regulatory board, so you do not have to give answers to why you vote the way you do. I think you're going to have to figure out which definition of regulatory you want to use. If you can approve ordinances or if you have to approve ordinances, if you make regulations, that makes you a regulatory board, in my opinion. I could be wrong. I'm not a scholar, I'm not a lawyer or anything, but these are the things that are concerning to me. And if you continue down this path and you do what you're obviously intent on doing to Mr. Pritchard, anybody on any committee that disagrees with you, none of them are safe. And that's not fair, and that's not fair to the town of Groton and to the people of Town of Groton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak?
Lynn Marshall, 118 Pearl Street in Noank. I have been on, I was on the Noank Zoning Commission for many years, so I have a real appreciation for Groton's Planning and Zoning Commission and the excellent job that they do. It's a difficult job, and you may not fully appreciate this because you have an excellent, experienced Planning and Zoning Commission, and they just make the job look easy because they're so good. The Planning and Zoning Commission uses two different hats and they have different associated skills, one for zoning and one for planning. And I don't have time to go into all this a lot, but just you can appreciate when an application for, on the zoning, when the application comes in, you don't have a lot of time to review it. You need to check for errors, you need to check for any omissions, and also check for ways that it does not comply with the regulations. And along with an application, the commission receives input from many experts, including architects, engineers, landscape architects, soil scientists, naturalists, hydrologists, attorneys, and so on. And the commissioners need to know what to believe and what to take with a grain of salt. And they need to understand and always remember that the experts are paid by the clients and it's the expert's job to get the application accepted by the commission, which may color their presentations and their answers. So in order for the commissioners to do a good job, it requires experience and a sharp inquisitive mind to really evaluate those applications. Planning is a different skill set. These are regulations and plans like data centers, short-term rentals, plans of conservation and development. And this is a lot of big-picture thinking with a concomitantly a lot of attention to details. So when these big, these are big issues, they have a lot of variables associated with them. Under each variable, there are factors that have switches, you turn it on or off, or it's a continuum, you decide where to set it. You need to understand the implications of each of those and spend the time to understand it. You also need to understand how all of those things interrelate with each other in the way that you combine them. And you need to look at it not only for how it will affect the present, but how it affects the future. Where's the population going? What about economic development? What about the ecological health in light of climate change and so on? These are very, very deep, big-picture issues that takes a different kind of mind. Finally, in order for the commission to work well together, they have to respect each other, really listen to each other, and trust each other. So it's not easy to get a high-performing group. Now, the learning curve for a new commissioner is a steep one. If an alternate attends all the planning and zoning meetings, does all the homework associated with each meeting, and after the meeting asks questions of their mentors on the commission about what went on and why decisions were made, you're looking at approximately a two-year period of time on a learning curve. And it could easily be longer than that before an alternate is up to speed. There is so much to learn. And at the beginning of the learning curve, it's difficult to predict who will end up being a good commissioner because there are so many skills involved, some of which are teachable and some of which are not. So each new alternate carries a risk. You do your best to choose well, but you're not always going to get it right. This means that when you do end up with a really good commissioner, value that person and use them to mentor the new ones so that the new ones can reach their greatest potential. Finally, there's the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. In addition to being a good commissioner, this job requires a lot of deep and broad knowledge and a lot of skill and finesse. Jeff Pritchard is a good chair. He has a wealth of knowledge, which is necessary for the process to run smoothly and not go off the rails. He encourages the commissioners to voice their opinions. He is respectful of the applicants and is patient and helpful with them. He listens to the public. He keeps everything... He keeps everything under control in a relaxed, easy-going way. He gets the job done. So I ask you, is there anyone currently on the commission who can fill Mr. Pritchard's shoes as chair? If so, will that person would be willing to step up and take that position?
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Okay. All right, I'll come back another time and I'll just finish that by saying, I don't know the answers to these questions, but I certainly do hope that the Personnel and Appointments Committee, as well as the Town Council at large, had the answers to those questions before they decided to decapitate Mr. Pritchard.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Why not?
My name is Chris Kuhn. I reside at 104 Irving Street in Groton. I'm actually wanting to submit, to read a statement by Elizabeth Reisbeck, who is unable to speak tonight. She's co-chair of the Groton Conservation Advocates, and she resides at 81 Main Street in Groton. Her statement. "In December 2024, I addressed the Town Council on the ill-advised termination of Jeffrey Pritchard's service on the Planning and Zoning Commission without a vote. We strongly urge the council to do the right thing and hold a public vote on Pritchard's nomination to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This termination reflects an even greater concern, that of transparency in government. One of the keystones of good government in a democratic society is transparency of decision-making by those in power with the people who elected them. As transparency is eroded, so too is the quality of decision-making in a body that fears an open discussion. The Groton Town Council has developed a habit over the years of not discussing in public their thinking on issues that might be controversial, except for very few counselors who have the courage to put their judgment and values out there for all to know. While no doubt you discuss these things in private, when you meet before us, you are mum on why you are voting a certain way. Why is that? You owe it to the public who elected you to let us know what your concerns are, why you are voting a certain way on various issues. In a healthy democratic society, we discuss issues and share points of view. This is how a governing body educates itself and the public and makes better decisions. This is how the Planning and Zoning Commission has operated, seeking compromise when there is disagreement after lengthy public input. The failure to even vote on Mr. Pritchard's appointment marks a new low in government transparency in Groton. It is not too late to rectify that and demonstrate council commitment to open proceedings by voting on Mr. Pritchard's appointment. I also urge the council to have a policy of publicly thanking the volunteer citizens who serve on task forces and commissions as they end their service. The council's failure to even thank the task force on resilience and sustainability's members until it was shamed into it showed a complete disregard for the task force's work. Indeed, we would not now have a full-time staffer working on the critical issue of Groton's resilience to climate change if it weren't for the compelling case for it made by the task force."
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay. Let's see any other hands. We will be moving on to our consent calendar. Counselor Gajewski?
Yes, just going to make sure we check online. Is there anybody online? There's a, no, okay, thank you.
Counselor Gajewski?
Motion to approve the consent calendar, December 3, 2024, and December 16, 2024 minutes, and special trust fund contributions, January, so moved.
Second, Parker. Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Parker. Counselor Borland?
Um, yes. Overwhelmingly, I find these minutes, in my opinion, to be targeting. Many other times, other counselors are disruptive, and it's not noted in the minutes. Overwhelmingly, it's an opinion that I'm being disruptive when I'm not with the majority. And I just feel it's a bit abusive to constantly name and say that I'm one or the counselor holding it up. It's an opinion. So I, I ask that these minutes be revised.
What section are you discussing?
All of it. Everywhere my name is on the whole, whole thing. Constantly, every meeting now, this new, new transparent thing is to put in there that counselor borderline's out of line because I speak up for what I believe.
Which section are you discussing? It's not all of it.
I'm sure you know where they are, the, the sections. I can read them out if you'd like me to.
Can you just point them out?
Sure. They're, they're pretty clear in here. So after this, it says here that we recessed. Let me just find the exact spot. Let me just ahead of marks. Sorry, we're doing a ton of minutes, so. Section, page three of meeting minutes, December 3, 6:30, Town Hall. Page three, Consent Calendar. Very first paragraph.
Mayor Franco called the recess at 7:41 due to counselor borderline being out of order. Council was back from recess at 8:01.
Yeah, I just don't know how I can be out of order in a consent calendar if I'm giving my report. That doesn't make any sense to me.
These are things that have come across in our rules, and they are supposed to be notated in the minutes.
They're not supposed to be notated in the minutes. This is a new thing that you're choosing to do. And I find it to be very attack, you're attacking me. And I ask that you stop again, that you stop calling out. So when Counselor Pacino stood up and banged the thing with his thing and stood up in the whole thing, nobody called the quorum. I did. That was not noted in those minutes. Why?
Because this is where you were called out of order three times and we had to take a break.
Doesn't matter.
It rose to a level where it should be noted in the minutes.
It's still, seems to be very attacking.
And I think all points of orders are typically in the minutes.
Not typically. Also, the new thing, new trend that's starting, which again, we can choose to slice the minutes how we wish. Not everybody has TV. Not everybody, some people are hearing impaired. And minutes are important because not everyone has time to watch all the meetings. And the new thing now is to add, the full report is on YouTube at this. Go here. Instead of saying Bruce Jones's comments regarding personnel appointment, it says, just go to the, go to the YouTube video. Why are we not putting what was said? Why is all the controversial issues now, to my opinion, has a YouTube link and says, go watch it? Before, we would put clip notes of ideas of things that were stated there. It's a new trend that I'm seeing, and I definitely have concerns. And it's no disrespect to the people writing it. You guys are only as good as the direction they're given by the council and the town manager. But I do have concerns with the way this is, and I ask that the targeting stop. I ask for detailed notes to be appropriate. And when it's an issue that is important, it deserves the right to be written out in its, in its full, not go to YouTube. Not everyone has access. And I just don't think that's right. Thank you.
Thank you. My response to that is I do not support your change. And what I am noticing in the minutes are the agenda items with the resolutions and the votes. And it has very, I don't even think there's any comments from counselors listed in here at all. And I think that has been the overall change that has happened to our minutes. And you are correct, there are people that are hearing impaired, and the YouTube channel does have it so that you can put on closed captioning. But I do not support taking out the point of orders, and actually, point of orders in Robert's Rules of Order are listed as items that should be noted in the minutes. All right. Seeing no other hands? We'll work on passing the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions. Passes eight to one to zero. Up next is communications and reports, other than committee reports. Start with the town counselors. Counselor Merritt, do you have anything you would like to share this evening?
No.
Counselor borderline?
Yep. Before I start, before you start my time, I'm just going to pass this down. I'm going to send it to email. I'm sending, I'll get one of these to the town clerk. This is my referral regarding rules that are seen, regarding how our personnel appointments rules have been derived. You can start my time if you wish. Town Council Rule 7.0 C Agenda, Town Council, which states, "Only items reported from the committee will, with approval recommended by the majority of the committee members present shall appear on the agenda. Action on any unscheduled items shall require supervision of the rules and shall comply with FOIA." And I can go on. My concern is, as a person who has yet to be put on a standing committee, maybe now with the changes going on, there might be a vacancy coming up, I hear. So perhaps there will be, but what I'm hearing from that side is, you know, I've served up on, on the council now for a couple of terms, and yet I've not been put on any standing committee, and other counselors up here are on multiple committees. With that, we are told that we, as a council, should be making a decision. Why is only three members from a personnel appointment meeting making the whole decision of a council of nine when everyone up here is individually elected and we all deserve a right to have a say in that reappointment? A committee is supposed to be information gathering and reporting back, and it should be giving a recommendation, a recommendation, not an action. And it doesn't mean that all of us should not have a chance to say something. So I added in here and I annotated the areas where, and I will send, I also have it from Section 4.7 of Appointments, ABCs, and I, I will email all this over to you guys. But I do have concerns that the way this is rolling out is not fair, equitable to all councils that are elected individually. And we all deserve a right. The community votes us at large. They did not vote for three members of a personnel appointment meeting to make all of the decisions of the whole town. Because in fact, the town doesn't have the right to pick who should be on that personnel appointment committee. And so with that, town counselors should have a stake in picking who's going to be on there, not three members. And I think that's the concern, and I heard it overwhelmingly tonight, and I keep hearing it in the community. So we, we need to do better. This is not how we ran things before. Why we're doing this now is disgusting, and I'm appalled to be up here. With that, I'll end on a positive note. I am a proud mother of two boys who serve our country, and I got to experience the homecoming of the USS Virginia. It was so nicely for you to read the, the president thing from Mr. Carter and it having relation to our naval submarine base. It was exceptional to be down there as a local homecoming. I hope everyone got to read the article in the day paper. It was such a surprise to see that. And it was the true homecoming of one of our Fitch High School graduates who went out there for six-month deployment. He went out for 189 days. He surfaced in two areas in Norway for only a total of seven days twice. The rest he was out to sea. And so I just want to thank the families of the USS Virginia and all of their commitment to our country, our town, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pacino, you have anything you'd like to share?
Happy New Year, Groton.
Thank you. Counselor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There has been a lot of discussion online about what businesses are coming into Groton. Some concerns, some people who are happy. On that note, there is a Groton Community Conversation being held on January 29 at 5:45 at Thrive 55. And the title of it is "Hot Topics: Real Answers, Groton's Development Explained." I think that it is a great opportunity for people who may not understand how things happen in Groton, how decisions are made, to, to find out what's going on. I'm sure that it will be videotaped, so if you are not able to attend, I hope that you are able to watch it. I also want to say thank you or just note the fact that the former president, Jimmy Carter, was such a man of dignity. He served our country with grace and was the epitome of sacrifice and service. So I want to note that I am very honored to be here in Groton. My husband was active duty in 2005 when the Brat Commission came in. I know my family chose to stay in Groton. From, we moved back here in 2002, so out of my husband's 21 years of service, he served here all but four years, five years of that. And it was our honor to be here, but I know that in 2005, it was very much a fear that we would have to move. So I want to say a special thanks to the Carter family and to former President Carter, and just to honor him for what he has done for Groton. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy New Year also. I would like to thank the Groton Police Department. I have just completed a 10-week program with the Groton Police Department Citizen Police Academy. And I just want to thank Officer McCullin and Officer Fifi for organizing and running this academy. It's basically the police academy reduced in clip note version. It's everything that the police, a policeman learns when they go into the academy is just reduced down to a 10-week program. So it was a real honor to be able to be in this class. We had about 10 people in this class with a lot of enthusiasm. I also like to thank the enthusiasm, energy, and dedication of the Groton Police in teaching this class. They came with tremendous amount of energy. And they took us through everything, including recruitment, domestic violence, patrols, the marine unit. We got to go down and see the boat. Search and Caesar, DUI, crisis intervention, K-9 unit. I do not want to be in the end of a K-9 dog. It seemed incredible amounts of energy. Firearms training and taser training. We also did a scenario day where we were put in five scenarios with officers around us, angry drunk guy, domestic violence, traffic stops, dispatch, and a hardware store robbery that we had to solve. So the students all came, all of us came with a lot of willingness to learn, and the officers came with a lot of willingness to teach. So I just want to thank this course, anybody who's interested in, in police. I took it just to learn more about the police department. And also, it applies a lot. Just a couple of weeks ago, we approved a de-escalation grant. And just learning the amount of training these guys go through, these kind of grants are vital to keep them up to speed. So it just was a great thanks, it was a great experience, and a good thanks to that. And anybody can go and do it. They usually hold them in the fall. There were a number of young guys in there who were looking to be police officers, so they got to learn what goes on, and a bunch of others. So just a big thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McBride?
Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. Also want to thank everyone for coming out tonight in support of Jeffrey Pritchard. The responses have been overwhelming for the past month. Over the past few weeks, I have participated in two Groton Heights Property Sale Review Committee meetings, and we have a third meeting scheduled for this Thursday. I have also received similar emails and phone calls from various residents regarding the handling of Jeffrey Pritchard's reappointment application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm also extremely disappointed with the manner and how this matter has been handled. I expressed such at the December 3 council meeting, where I mentioned I would do whatever I could to ensure this matter was handled properly. At that meeting, I was informed that the Personal Appointments Committee was scheduling a meeting the following week, and I was hopeful that the committee would discuss Mr. Pritchard's application. The meeting occurred, and there was no discussion regarding his application. I then asked Town Manager Burt what options existed for the council to reconsider Mr. Pritchard's application, as my understanding was that the council could reconsider the prior motion, which was to suspend the rules and to allow the council to consider Mr. Pritchard's application, which failed on December 3. Mr. Burt informed me that any action would need to receive six votes of the council to move forward. I then sent a referral to the town manager, which was sent to the council and stated the following. "I would like to request the following referral be provided to the council for their consideration. The Personal Appointments Committee did not properly discuss, review, or consider the reappointment of Jeffrey Pritchard to the Planning and Zoning Committee after over 20 years of service at Town of Groton. As a result, the full council did not have the ability to discuss, review, and consider his reappointment if it deemed appropriate. Therefore, I would like to request a referral to the council to add a future council agenda of Jeff Pritchard's application for reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The reason for this referral is simply to ensure the full council has the ability to consider such an important reappointment and not allow a committee of three counselors to usurp the full council of its roles and responsibilities the citizens of Groton have elected us to perform. As of today, this referral has not received the six votes needed to move forward." On an additional note, I hope when the Personal Appointments Committee considers other applications to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they also consider Mr. Pritchard's application since it failed to do so previously. And when and if another application or recommendation to become a full member of the Planning and Zoning Commission comes, and Zoning Commission comes before me, if I am still on council, I will be certain to do whatever I can to ensure the council considers Mr. Pritchard's application along with any other individual the Personnel Appointments Committee is recommending. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I would like to apologize for my brief tardiness. I was stuck in traffic coming from work. I hope everyone had a happy and safe holidays, and I am too mourning the loss of former President Carter. Couple of things. I, I'll go to the, I'm blanking. But, so I'll go what I was gonna say. I have received many emails on the Jeffrey Pritchard appointment. I am slowly getting and responding to pretty much all of them. So, and as I stated in the last meeting, that I did not make a second because the nomination would still be pending. So now there's, I do have a couple of questions on what the future of that is. So just so you know, that was my intention there. And that's it.
Thank you. Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended, as Councillor McBride stated, the Property Sales Review Committee meetings, which occurred on December 9th and December 30th. Yes, we will be having a meeting on Thursday and potentially on Monday if I'm correct. Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Where we will be planning interviews. Correct? So just wanna give everyone a heads up on that. And two, to remind everyone that per state statute, those have to be held in executive session. I received many emails regarding Mr. Pritchard, a couple of other emails, and I will state again, oh, I just wanna point out, as a Rules Chair, I do wanna point out that we are not to use electronics or read into, or have accepted emails from anyone and read them into the record. So I am going to say there was a violation committed from Mr. Vice-Councillor McBride and Mayor Franco because she allowed it to happen. So I will make a note that that's a violation of our rules.
Thank you.
On that note, I have to remind everyone that we did suspend the rules on December 3rd to bring it forth with six, it had to be six people in favor to bring it forth. It did not get the recommended referral at that time. It does state in our rules on page seven, on the 34th, Town Council Rules, that once a matter has been rejected or decided substantially, the same matter may not be the subject of a referral for 12 months or unless the councillor recommends a referral with six votes in favor, which was Councillor McBride's email, but we also did it on December 3rd, and it failed. So it can't come before us for 12 months, and I believe he still stays on, still stays on until the matter's decided. So his thing, his term expired on December 31st, so I just wanna make sure everyone understands the process that we're trying to do correctly. Thank you.
Point of information? Your question?
Just through the mayor to the town manager, so at this point in time, based on the referral and everything, there's nothing we can do.
Well, there was a referral submitted, so that would have to have a positive five votes. There's six votes coming, the one making the referral.
And nobody can make a motion to suspend the rules, it has to come in the form of a referral?
You will need, well, you'll need six votes. I'd have to look at whether it has to be done in advance or not.
Thank you. All right. All right, as we know, we, as a council, are soliciting developers via RFP to come to our community, to conduct business, to invest millions in our community. And it has come to my attention that a respectable developer, who was interested in placing a bid on a Groton empty school property, took the time to tune in to our town council meetings. After watching our meetings, the developer then changed his mind. Let's be clear, this is not the first time a business or a developer has conveyed this type of message. Town staff has since spoken to the developer, and we can only hope that the town staff helped alleviate their misgivings, and the developer will go forward and submit a bid. But this is clear as day to me. The behavior of certain councillors is affecting our community. With that being said, I wanna make it perfectly clear that each and every councillor up here has an opportunity to express their opinions on topics that come before us on our agenda. Of course, within the confines of the rules. Nobody is suppressing your ability to express yourself. Different thoughts and perspectives are a good thing. But we should all be respectful, be professional, be considerate of our fellow councillors. Each councillor sitting up here is an equal, regardless of how many votes one received in the election. There is no need to obstruct the business of our meetings because other councillors do not agree with your opinion. Each decision this council makes is decided by votes. Those decisions are called the will of the council. This is how a functioning democracy works. You will win some, and you will lose some. Also, all governments are run by rules. Meeting rules are designed to remove chaos. What is unacceptable is when a councillor repeatedly disregards the rules, disrespects the council, the council's time, and conducts themselves poorly with repeat violations. Let's be clear, by attempting to portray me or any fellow councillors in a negative light does not hurt myself or them. What it ultimately hurts is our community, our town. I am up here trying to do good things for my community, as I believe all of these councillors are as well. Though I hope we can all agree that misconduct, which happens regularly on this council, needs to stop. People are watching us, and it's not just those who vote, but those who may want to invest in our community. Let's get our business completed professionally and with respect, and please, let us put our community first. Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you.
Point of information?
Your question.
Can you please forward whoever the contact information was on to the whole council?
I'm not sharing that.
Is it F.O.I.L.B. through the mayor or through the town manager?
I'm not sharing it.
Is it, is it F.O.I.L.B. through the mayor or through the town manager?
I don't think that's appropriate, but I'm going to say, this is not the first time that this has happened.
I'm asking.
People have come to our council, and I'm letting the public know that this is happening.
Through the mayor, through the town manager, is that F.O.I.L.B.? There's a communication that was stated that somebody talked to her, and it was in a negative light, and I think we can request who that was, correct?
Not via a conversation, that's not.
It said it has come to my attention.
Okay, so it's not, okay, we don't have it on trackable. Okay, just wanna make sure. Thank you.
Up next, Clerk of the Council. Thank you. Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting.
At Drive 55 plus. Currently, there's four vacancies, one Republican seat in District 3, two minority representation in District 4, and a Democratic seat in District 6, which we think we have someone disinterested to fill that next month.
Thank you. Councillor Bordalain.
Thank you. I just wanna thank the town clerk for doing my swearing-in for the justice of the peace. I had a quick question. I know that all the seats were not filled, and I had asked a question about, like, do we have to wait another four years before we can fill them? Or can people, if they were never taken, apply still? And that was my question. I don't expect you to have it tonight, but.
No, I do have the answer.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So if it's a major political party, and if there's a vacancy, that party can appoint someone. If you are unaffiliated, then if, you have to wait the four years.
The four years, wow.
You do.
Thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Town Manager Burt.
Good evening. Few things of interest. Gold Star Highway, if you remember, we've had the sale going on for 517, 529 Gold Star. We've been working with developers for quite some time. Did hear from them an update, and they're planning to submit a, some of their paperwork, their permits, or their applications, sorry, to the planning department. So some forward progress, so that's good news. The ABC training's already mentioned. In passing earlier, will be on January 30th at 6:00 PM. That is for Robert's Rules and Freedom of Information Act. And we will have a process for moving forward for those who could not attend, or for new people as they onboard. GIS system, the map system on our website, which gets heavily used, there are new 2023 aerial photos, so take a look. It's always good to have brand-new, relatively brand-new data. Annual audit is completed and submitted on time, and my understanding is not a single comment, which I've never heard of in my career, so that's good. Budget, moving along, wrapping up CIPs, the draft CIP list right now, so it's chugging along. Let's see, the state was in this week doing the audit for school construction for the middle school. They do an audit, they look through all the bills, the paperwork, what's done, and then they tell you how much you're gonna get back. So we should get a report in a few weeks, so we'll know how much is gonna be returned to us. And then we expect probably late, latest 25, they'll come and do the elementary schools. So hopefully, not more than a couple of times rolling that bond we've been doing, so we're getting there. The last day for Bartram Dillis' housing, for a Human Services Director, was the 4th, and just wanna thank her for everything she did. And we just closed on applications for that position, so we'll hopefully be interviewing soon. We saw the results of the 24 Neighborhood Assistance Act grants, if you recall those. Riverfront Children's Center was awarded $65,000, being covered by Groton Utilities for the low E window installation. Thames Valley Council for Community Actions, and they had the new childcare facility energy-efficient windows. Groton Utilities also doing $60,791 and 37 cents. And Yankee Gas is doing the other $4,208.63. Let's see, now to the stock, today, the last piece was put in place. There'll be a walkthrough on Friday, so hopefully, nothing is found there. It looks good from what I've seen, so that's about wrapped up, and under, and under the grant amount, so that's always good. We just received recently the litter vac. If you recall, we moved forward the litter vac, wasn't supposed to come to the spring, but we got it early, so we have to do a little training on it. That will be on the road soon. Few things, a couple more things, let's see.
Training for anybody that wants to do the litter vac?
Yeah, I wish. I wouldn't mind doing it. Unfortunately, no. But hopefully, you'll be seeing that out on the road relatively soon. Because this time of year's actually could be a good year, a good time of year when the snow's off to do, so hopefully, that will happen again soon. It was mentioned earlier, one thing I wanna mention, the, the rule on things getting the, the recommendation of majority of those on council, or on committees, that was in place when I arrived, so I don't know how long before that, but that was in the 2017, the 30th council rules. I have no idea how long it was before that, but that's not a new rule. Let's see, it was mentioned about minutes being done by the town clerk, direction by council town manager. Actually, I have not given direction to the town clerk on minutes. If he has a question, I certainly answer it, but if he given no direction. ICMA, it was asked earlier about, that's the, I've got a certification under that. Have I said anything not done ethically? No, I have not for the reappointment, and I have no worries about keeping my credentialing. And then last thing, there was, you know, it's been asked the letter to Pritchard, and I will somewhat take blame for that myself. I was asked, how will it be communicated? I sent an example letter to the clerk's office who used that, and that was questioned to me than at my prompting, so, but just, hey, that did not come from them on their own. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Up next is, oh, questions, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councillor McBride. I just had a quick question. Any update on the grant position?
So it was offered just recently to someone, and they did not take it. And we're seeing some other grants, similar positions, that are paying quite a bit more to other municipalities, so I believe John Reiner said, the planning director said, he and some of the staff are gonna meet later this week to discuss options. So we are very eager, of course, to get that filled, so I'll let you know once there's a plan figured out.
Thank you.
Councillor Bordalain? Yeah. The ABCs, when will the other date be out, so people can plan?
There's only one date for going there live, but we will be, what we're gonna do is we're videotaping those meetings. It'll be broken into two videos, but we're gonna insert, for anyone who can't do it, or for future people that come onboard, there'll be quiz questions throughout it that we insert, you'll certify that you've watched it, and then, you know, turn in the answer to the questions.
So if you can't make the 30th, just wait for that to come out?
Yeah, it'll come out soon after.
All right, and then another question I got about that is, if you're already serving, do you have to do it now, or do you wait until you're reappointed?
The, the resolution passed that it's all existing and future, so it is required sometime soon.
Okay.
Councillor Merritt?
I have a question for the town manager. The bathrooms at par four, what's the progress?
End of the month. End of January should be done. As you remember, we had the asbestos issue, we had an issue with a very uneven floor that we had to redo the floor, and then the tile got back ordered, and the tile supposed to be in within the next week, so the anticipation is end of the month, so.
Do you feel that building could use a complete overhaul? I know it'd be expensive, but it's been there quite a while.
I know that's sort of one of, I know there's some interest, for instance, it may be in closing, I don't know about a complete overhaul, but I know there's some changes that are out there being talked about that maybe would make sense at some point.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Committee of the Whole, Mayor Franco, I have nothing to report. Up next, Personnel Appointments Chair Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have various appointments coming up, which will be done in new business tonight. I just have some comments. I've seen and read emails over the past couple of weeks. I've also read comments in the Groton Community Forum from many different people on planning and development here in Groton, and many of them with a lot of great ideas on what residents would like to see happen in the town, and I thank all those people who have submitted all of those. A couple of points I wanted to just address that show up in many, many of the emails, and many of the emails seem to be, have the same sentence structure in them, so these things keep coming over and over again. One is that the council has some control over the chairs of the ABCs. The council only approves volunteers for boards and commissions. The council has no control over any chair people in any committee, so that's solely done in the committees themselves, but we have no say on anything that's done in that. The second point that's brought up is, Mr. Pritchard was dismissed, and this keeps getting brought up all the time. So when a president's term expires, it just expires, he isn't dismissed. When a governor's term expires, it just expires, he isn't dismissed. Mr. Pritchard was not dismissed, his five-year term just expired. These are not lifetime appointments, and Mr. Pritchard served for over 20 years, and we thank him for that, but his term expired. For those of you who missed the statement I read a while ago, I just wanna reread it again. "In the last number of years, I've heard from the community as a councillor and on this committee for some fresh and new ideas around development in Groton, residents wanting changes in our community in both housing and business development, and that has not been happening. Change in our community starts in the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have five people with 75 years of experience. They are long-serving, dedicated, and committed, but at some point, they're all gonna move on. We have a very deep and experienced bench, but we need to broaden the view with new people, revise regulations, and new ideas. We have some new people reaching out, expressing interest in serving, but there have been no openings. We don't always have new people interested. Right now, we do. I'd like to capture that. Create opportunities for new people with new ideas and energy, and be involved and learn from our experienced team. I appreciate the 20 years of time and service Mr. Pritchard has given to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to Groton. He was not fired like some have suggested, just like I said a moment ago, but merely his term has expired. We also appreciate all the time that all of our ABC members give to the town, but perhaps the time has come to give someone else an opportunity to serve. This isn't about what a person has done, or if they're doing a good job. It's at what point is it in the public's interest to create opportunities for new people with new ideas to be involved and transition in ABC gradually, so you don't lose all the experience and knowledge. The community has been asking for change, and it's time for change." I also saw the application for Mr. Pritchard's reappointment came through our email, and per, previously, we've already discussed it, per Town Council Rules, we are unable to relook at Mr. Pritchard's appointment for 12 months without the vote of six councils. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bordalain.
Thank you. First, I just wanna say all that was done without any time taken, so I just ask for a fair, equitable treaty.
Point of parliamentary agreement.
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
Your inquiry.
I, for reports, I do not do the timekeeping, because it's, I do it as the clerk, it's similar to the clerk and the manager, and they do not have time.
I agree, thank you.
Okay.
I just, in the past, we have, so I'm just looking for, okay.
No, don't call that.
My question is, because we were told to ask here at this point if we have questions about anything further in the agenda, and not at the time. So my question is, was there anyone that applied that was not moved forward from your last meeting that you have in this today?
Can you repeat the question, I don't understand that either.
So at your last Personnel and Appointments meeting, were there any applicants that were not moved forward that the council should be aware of? That applied? Because we should know as a council. And you said to ask at this point, not later, because this is where we discuss that section.
No.
Councilor Jones said no.
And I guess my other question is, why was Mr. Pritchard not put back forward?
Was not put back forward?
As a discussion item, how come nobody, like, was it even an agenda item that would never even made it? I'm asking a question.
I'm sorry, did you say point of information?
Yes, I may ask the question that I thought he just explained it, and the chairperson, Chair Jones, just stated it in his, I just read that out loud.
Right, so my question was, that's his opinion, right? He can't speak for everybody else, so I'm just curious, did anybody else at that meeting, I'm asking about the meeting, did anybody else have a concern or want to move Mr. Pritchard's name forward?
This is Personal and Appointments Chair Jones, are you asking Chair Jones?
Yeah.
And your question is?
Was there any other members at that time that wanted to move Mr. Pritchard forward?
Well, he can't surmise if somebody wanted to.
Well, if I was in the meeting, and I was a member, and I said I'd like to put on the floor, but it didn't get a second.
Did anybody try and bring Mr. Pritchard forward during your meeting? No?
No, okay. And, all right, thank you.
I have a question.
Councilor?
And I'm not sure if this is a question or parliamentary procedure, but if he put, if Mr. Pritchard put an application forward, I'm having a difficult time understanding why that couldn't be considered, because the procedure that was nullified had nothing to do with Mr. Pritchard. It had to do with sustaining the rules. So why can't his application be considered again? The motion that didn't pass in council had nothing to do with the rules.
From my interpretation of what I have read, is that they didn't do a second in the meeting, in which, so there was no motion, it could have been brought back at the Personnel and Appointments. The council then just tried to suspend the rules to bring Mr. Pritchard forward, which was a vote on Mr. Pritchard, basically, by bringing, like, a discussion. And because that failed, the discussion of Mr. Pritchard cannot go forward. That's how I am interpreting what we were sent by email as to how that works. So if the suspension of the rules didn't happen that night, Personnel and Appointments could have brought it back without a problem.
Yeah, somehow that doesn't add up to me, so I'll have to do some legal research on that. It just doesn't seem admirable, but thank you for the explanation.
Point of information?
Your question.
If the people that were on the committee didn't vote for the suspension of the rules, it probably wasn't going to get brought back up at the committee. I mean, that's just my thought.
Point of order. That's an opinion, that's not a question.
But I'm just asking.
Point of order. That's, you're asking what?
I'm asking if people wanted it to come forward, they would have voted for that.
That's an opinion, that's not a question at all. All right, that's, no, it's not. That's a statement, and an opinion-based statement that you are trying, I interpret as you're trying to throw out there on the floor, because you have no time to speak on this.
That's inappropriate point of order. I asked for point of order.
Your point of order.
I asked for decorum, and I'd like that to be in the notes as well, because that's inappropriate.
I didn't think it was inappropriate. All right, is there any other questions for Mr. Jones? Councilor Jones? Councilor Patina?
Councilor Jones, out of curiosity, can Mr. Pritchard show up at any Planning and Zoning meeting as an audience member and give his knowledge and expertise when asked?
Well, we don't allow public comment, because cows do not allow public comment.
No, he's asking about Planning and Zoning.
Oh, Planning and Zoning?
Yes, can he show up at a Planning and Zoning meeting as a guest?
I would direct that to the town manager.
Certainly under public comment, yes. And they do routinely have that.
So he would be allowed to show up and offer up to the town of Groton his expertise and knowledge?
As a citizen, yes.
As a citizen. And the only thing that all this changes is the fact that he doesn't get to vote. Okay, I believe. All right, thank you.
Councilor Russ? May I clarify that, please, that to Councilor Jones, Mr. Pritchard is still a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission at this moment, and will be so until somebody is appointed as a full-time member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so currently, Mr. Pritchard is still a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission per the charter.
And still the chairman.
And still the chairman, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you for answering questions, Mr. Jones. Up next, rules, Chair Parker.
No meeting, no report.
Councilor Portline?
I just, can you acknowledge the receipt of my referral tonight as well?
No meeting, no report, because we all have to read the referral, and I'm not discussing that tonight.
I didn't ask for discussion at all, just saying that you're a receipt of would be nice.
No meeting with no report.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Public Safety, Chair Russ.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Public Safety Committee meeting, next committee meeting will be on January 28 at 5:00 PM. We will continue to discuss how to appropriately finance ambulance services in our community.
Councilor Portline?
Yep, I just want to check the status, if there is any yet, on, like, there was the whole talk with the coastal flooding and signage. I sent a whole email over with a whole bunch of things, and I'm just not sure, maybe it's something for the town manager perhaps, but is there any movement on that, or any updates on this coastal signage for public safety?
Chair Russ?
So I believe this was discussed at the last time that we talked, and it had been referred to the town. The town was going to talk with the state, because most of the signage that was looked at was on state roads, and has that moved forward?
Yes, the state is extreme, as I've reported here before, the state's extremely restrictive on flooding signs. We put up some of our own flooding signs, the state will only authorize those flip-down signs, that is absolutely it. They will not, they turned us down flat, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And they did put up, they added that third one that we talked about, replaced two, and then added a third one.
All right. Any more questions? All right, so our next item of business is new business, it is 8:06. I would just like to take a quick break here before we start diving into the business. We'll take about a 10-minute break, it is 8:06.
I'm sorry, I heard a pause. I apologize.
No.
The majority of the decisions are not being made in committees.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're saying we can't.
They're voted on at the council.
All right, so I'd like to put, I'll put John Goodrich on the floor for Historic District Commission.
Point of order.
That would be a.
Point of order.
Council Parker. Your point of order.
He's not on agenda, just to remind everyone, he's not on the agenda. We have what is presented. It has to be the suspension of the rules and it has to be done correctly and you need six people to vote to bring it forward because he is, again, this is what happened last time. If they're not in the agenda packet that's been forwarded to the council and he's not on the agenda, we have to suspend the rules.
Understood, as well as Mr. Goodrich has already been voted on within the last year.
Okay, I'd like to, so as you've stated, you said we have a chance to put someone's name on the floor, but only with this.
If he has not been brought forward in the past year.
So only with the suspension, right. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and add Mr. Goodrich to Historic District Commission and Mr. Pritchard to.
That would be out of order.
Planning and zoning.
Those two would be out of order.
I, I'm making a motion to suspend the rules.
You can't.
The town manager said we could.
You cannot do that.
Point of order.
Your point of order.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Pritchard was already put forth December 3rd, 2024. There was also an email referral that went out. It did not get the sixth support and cannot be brought forward.
When I was talking to the town manager, he said I could suspend the rules, my understanding. Mr. Burr?
Just one on that.
Do you want to answer that?
I wasn't sure about.
Oh.
I think my, the referral process and I didn't think about there had been one already failed, so it would have to.
So we can't suspend the rules?
No, you cannot.
All righty then, all right. So again, I think this is, I don't know, I think there's a lot of problems here and I do agree that the folks watching from outside that are looking to invest, there's definitely some concerns, especially on our appointments, in my opinion. Thank you.
Point of information.
Your question.
When was Mr. Goodrich voted on? Do you have the date?
I just looked up, it's March 5th of '24.
Thank you.
So, yeah, after March 5th.
Okay, not seeing any other hands. We're going to vote on 2024-1101-1. Various appointments, reappointments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
I'm going to abstain.
McBride abstains.
That passes seven to zero to two. Up next, 2024-1074-1, recreational shellfish management plan update resolution. I'm going to move down to Council McBride, you want to take that one?
Certainly. 2024-1074, recreational shellfish management plan update resolution. I'd like to move forward with the resolution approving an updated shellfish management plan, whereas the town, Grotton Town Council has the authority to approve shellfishing regulations pursuant to section 26-257A of the Connecticut General Statutes and the Town of Grotton ordinance number 139, section 2-216 through 2-131 of the Town of Grotton code. And whereas the state of Connecticut Department of Agri Culture, Bureau of Aquaculture, the Town of Grotton Town Manager and the Town Council have reviewed and updated, reviewed the updated management plan in relation to the state of Connecticut shellfish regulations in the interest of both the recreation and commercial shellfishing, as well as the interest of the Town of Grotton. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council approves the updated shellfish management plan with the change of establishing the week-long pass being valid for seven days following purchase.
Second.
McBride, seconded by Gajaski. Council Board of Lon.
I've heard from some people that, I mean, I think it's great, I think the presentation that they presented with the more permanent pass, I think is going to be wonderful if it goes down to shellfishing in the past. The paper one is kind of tough to carry on you, so a lot of things that they're making, I can see concerns. I mean, even though the cost is low, I guess that justifies, I guess, the seven day pass. If someone was coming in for just a weekend or a few days, you know, they're committed to a seven day pass, but when I looked at the cost, I didn't see much difference, but it is kind of tough that in some ways, some people are here for a weekend and don't need a seven day pass. But I think for me, what I researched is the cost justifies the means for, that's the way that I see it, so. I'm in support of it. I think it's great change and I appreciate all the work of our boards and commissions and I appreciate that you guys do a lot of this work on behalf of the town. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands, we're going to vote on 2024-1074-1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2024-1074-1, health fund balance reserve policy res, the resolution. Council Russ, would you like to take that one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 2024-1075, health fund balance reserve policy. Resolution adopting the health fund balance reserve policy. Whereas the Town Council recommended adoption of the health fund reserve balance policy at their December 10, 2024 meeting, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council adopts the Town of Grotton health fund balance reserve policy. So moved.
Second.
By Russ, seconded by Board of Lon. Council McBride.
Thank you. I just wanted for clarification because I was, you know, someone mentioned to me what this meant because I didn't see a lot of the detail in here. So I just wanted to briefly explain so everybody's aware. Correct me if I'm wrong here, but the summation of this, because there was a lot of discussion at this council, was to make a resolution or a policy to set up to 5% a year over a three-year period to attain a 15%, commencing in fiscal '26, which is, and the current amount is about $300,000. So it's a policy that the council's adhering to, to try to set aside some reserve funds based upon those percentages.
Mr. Burr, is that how you?
Yeah, the actual motion to recommend was. Yeah, the actual motion to recommend was to establish, or the amendment to the motion, to establish the healthcare, the health fund balance reserves policy and to fund at 5% each year over three-year periods to achieve the 15% beginning in FYE '26. And that's how it would be written.
Thank you.
Council Bordalyn.
Can that be added into the minutes, perhaps? Because if it's not stated here in the motion, it just gets kind of wonky, because you have to happen to read a ton of pages and watch a ton of meetings to get that information. So for continuity purposes, I think it's important to have that embedded in this.
I could also send the updated one to be on the website, how we list a lot of the documents with it.
Yeah, I just ask moving forward that it's listed the way that it was voted on, for transparency and, you know, and so in the minutes, I hope that it's written that way, as the Council McBride had stated, because, again, it's a lot to trace back. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands, we'll take a vote on 2024-1075-1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
I'd like to recuse.
You're going to.
Recuse.
Recuse? All right, that is eight to zero to zero with one recusal of Council Merritt. Up next, 2024-878-6, street takeover ordinance. Council Pacino, would you like to take this one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to remind everybody that this is Council Jerome, Jerome's recommendation.
Jacon.
Jacon.
I was going to say, I missed that.
I say that to his face, too, and he always corrects me. Yes. So item 2024-878, street takeover ordinance. Am I reading the whole resolution down here, or just the resolve?
It's up to you, it's your prerogative.
I'm going to read the resolve, because we've talked about this for a long time. Resolve that the Town Council hereby adopts an ordinance to enact penalties for participating in street takeovers and refer to the RTM.
Second. By Pacino, seconded by Bordalyn. Council Bordalyn.
I think this is definitely needed, and I appreciate the hard work with the wording to make sure that it's follows the, with the state and everything else, after what happened here in Grotton. I think it's very indicative that we send a strong message about these street takeovers and the processes in which we should have jurisdiction to follow a certain guidance in ordinance. And other towns, from my understanding, I did research on that, are starting to look at this as well. So hopefully this helps, I mean, hopefully we never have to use it. So I appreciate this one coming forward. Thank you.
Council Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question through you to Mr. Burke.
Your question.
If the state changes the penalties, do we have to come back and do this again? If they bring it back to?
If they upped it, we would have, I mean, it's an up to, you can do lower. So if you want to increase it to any new one, then yes.
No, no, I meant if the state does it.
Yeah, that's what I mean. If the state ups the, this is the max amount, you don't have to go to the maximum amount. If they up it in the future, then if you want to up it, then just like with our parking tickets, you would have to amend the ordinance.
Okay. Just wanted to let everybody know that, so thank you.
Council Pacino.
Through the mayor to Mr. Burke.
Your question.
The opposite question. If they lessen the fines, do we have to change ours?
State, not, well, I wouldn't want to make it a compliance, but State Act overrules our ordinance, so if they said, they're not going to. But if they said yes, then it would automatically overrule ours. State Act rules.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more hands, we're going to vote on 2024-878-6, street takeovers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2024-1077-1, retaining of excess tax payments ordinance. Council Mayor, would you like to take that one?
Retaining of excess tax payments.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute, we have a, we have a new. We have a new one. I'm going to vote that out to you. Do you have it? You got it? Sorry about that.
Okay. 2024-1077, retaining of excess tax payments ordinance, set public hearing resolution. Resolution to set a public hearing for an ordinance to retain excess tax payments. Whereas pursuant to Section 12, 129 of the Connecticut General Statutes, a legislative body of municipality, may by ordinance authorize the tax collector to retain payment in excess of the amount due, provided the amount of the excess payment is less than $5. And whereas the town currently processes refunds of all payments to veterans within a period of six years from the payment date, and to all other persons who have overpaid within three years of the due date of the bill. And whereas the administration costs to proceed, to process said checks far outweighs the value of the refund checks, and whereas most checks for these minimal amounts go uncashed and may ultimately be s, s-cheated to the state of Connecticut. And whereas the town must hold a public hearing to consider such ordinance, now therefore be it resolved, the Town Council hereby schedules the public hearing on the ordinance to retain excess tax payments for February 4, 2025.
Second. May by Merritt. Seconded by Pacino.
I just want to mention that if there are multiple bills for that person, motor vehicle, for some, it will be applied to any existing outstanding other ones. And if there's multiple refunds, let's say you had a couple dollars back from several things, it would be combined and would be returned.
Council Russ.
Just a procedural question. As I'm looking at this, the only difference between the one that was in our packet and the one that we got tonight is the words "cost and value." Am I correct in that?
Yeah, on the second of whereas, we'll see where it says, the original said refunds and excess payments, the next, the new one just says refunds of all payments.
Thank you. And when was this?
I received it today, this afternoon. So it's, it's, it's minimal change, that's fine.
Okay. I'm concerned with the fact that it wasn't posted prior to tonight, but the fact that it's just going to public hearing, I will vote yes. But if we were actually voting on.
You can make those minor changes while posting, it is a lot.
All right, thank you.
Council Bordalyn.
I was going to say those exact things, similar, which I say often. I don't like voting on things that are on my desk the day of that I don't get to read, just like if we send emails and other people say, well, they haven't had a chance to read them yet. We all have full-time jobs, or you may be retired, perhaps. But, you know, it is important, if there's a language change, that we have that, I think, within 48 hours, unless it's an emergency, so that we have time to read it. I do like what the town manager said today, if I'm hearing correctly, and I don't want to paraphrase or quote you wrong, so please chime in if I do, it's not intentional, because that's a new development. Because originally, when we went for this, it was, that was it. It would just, the person would lose it. So the new change also is that it could be applied to any other existing balance. And is that written in here clearly?
I do, that's actually their current procedure. That's what they do. That's not what goes into the ordinance, that's just how it works in law, so.
But when it was asked, and I rewatched the meeting, and I looked at this in my notes, it was stated that, no.
Yeah, yeah, de-provided subsequent information, I sent it to the council right after that meeting.
Yeah, no, I'm just, when we're talking about, everybody else doesn't have those emails, is what I'm trying to say. So I'm trying to get that on the record. Since we're using the YouTube videos as our references, it's indicative that we state that email that was sent out, because everyone else doesn't have that email, the public. So we have it as councilors, but the neighbor next door to me does not.
I'd already read, though, that it's mentioned that changes, so it was a move.
Right, and I'm just clarifying that from our last meeting, that that is an official change, which I think makes sense, because I don't think anybody's money should just go away, is a concern for me. So I'm interested to see if we get anybody to speak at the public hearing for this, and go from there. And if there's not, oh, my last question, so if there's not another balance, then it's absorbed.
Sandy, please.
So if the person only had one account, it just absorbed.
If it was less than five, then it would be retained in general fund, yes.
Right. And the other point that I did bring up, and I had some people reach out to me, is I know some people here are saying it's only three or four dollars, but 10, 20 accounts that happen to be like, that are even four, 20 bucks is bread, peanut butter, tuna fish for people who are hungry. I don't think it should stay in our general fund. I think we should, not your market, but we should say that it should go over to Human Services to help people in need. If people earn that money and paid that money, and they're going to just absorb it, so it's just going to stay in our funds, why don't we make sure it goes to people in need in our community? So how would we have to do that?
That was already discussed at the last one.
So we'd have to have a vote on it, and if there's no support, it would just, we just absorb it into our general fund.
There was no support for it at our last discussion.
I'm just asking, it would, so the money would just absorb into our general fund?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm sad that we don't have the support. I know it might be only a $50 a year, or 100, but I think that money, if someone else is hard-earned money, is being reserved, absorbed by a town, we should make sure we're giving it back in good faith to people in need. And I'm sad that I didn't have that support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, for clarifying the changes. These were questions that I had brought forward during our Cow meeting, and I'm glad to hear that, the answers that you brought forward. And I will be supportive of us going forward with a, setting a public hearing date.
For any information?
Oh, Council Pacino.
I'm good, thank you.
Play of information.
Council Bordalyn, your question.
If at the public hearing constituents or constituents bring forth concerns, let's just say they want this, this, and this, how then will that come back to us? We'd have a chance to look at it, like, so it's one thing to have a public hearing. If we hear concerns, do we have a chance to make those changes?
I don't want to sound too devaluing your question or anything, but it's the same way it's always been. When we have public hearings, and there's an ordinance or something that comes forward, it's the same thing. You listen to the public, and we could have discussions afterwards. It's how it's always worked.
No, I'm not debating that. I guess maybe I said my question wrong, I apologize. What I meant to say is, what if some other people are concerned and think that money should go to, like, Human Services, but we've already said, it didn't get the support? So it can be rediscovered, though, even though it was already discussed before?
I'd have to go back and look to see if it was actually voted on.
I don't think it was, yeah.
If it was voted on, or if there was a motion, we'll have to, we'll have to see. Because there could have been a minded motion that might have failed, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we'll have to go watch the YouTube video, because I don't think it's in the news, so we would have to, I'll bring that at the next meeting, I'll go back and watch the meeting.
I can look at my notes as well.
All right, thank you.
I'd also want to state that all of the money that comes to the town, basically from taxpayers, is hard-earned money that is from taxpayers. And we, as a council, can choose to spend that money by voting, to allocate it to certain areas. And we do so with a budget, and we also do so to offset taxes with excess funds. And I don't know if it has to go into, me personally, that the excess funds that would come out of here, if they should have to go into a specific fund and create a new one. But I am good with it going to the general fund, and us spending it appropriately with our budget, and if anything else comes along during the course of the year. All right, seeing no more hands. We're going to take a vote on 2024-1077-1, excess tax payments ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Passes nine to zero to zero.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All right, motion to adjourn by Bordalyn. Seconded by Parker. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Passes nine to zero to zero.